Good morning Birmingham. This is a meeting, a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This morning, our officers on duty are Cedric Pinkert from the downtown precinct, Demetrius Davis from East Precinct, and Frederick Bertsch from East Precinct. Our invocation this morning will be delivered by Pastor Talmage Jackson of Rushing Spring Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Clinton Woods. If you're willing and able, please stand. Good morning Birmingham. This is a meeting, a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This morning, our officers on duty are Cedric Pinkert from the downtown precinct, Demetrius Davis from East Precinct, and Frederick Bertsch from East Precinct. Our invocation this morning will be delivered by Pastor Talmage Jackson of Rushing Spring Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Clinton Woods. If you're willing and able, please stand.
We understand that we should pray for one another. We clear and read in the Holy Scriptures that we should pray without seasoning. Now God, we come lifting up this great city, which is called Birmingham. Father, we bless you to look upon this city in a mighty, mighty way, Father. Ask you right now, Jesus, to look upon our great man, Father. Bless him right now with wisdom and knowledge and understanding how to run your city. Look upon his office staff members, one by one. And Master, we ask that you would just bless the counselors, that you have placed, bless each district, one by one. Bless now, Master, for the first responders, Father. Protect them as they go in and as they come out, Father, the only that you can do, Father. And Master, we come now lifting up this family that was hurt on last week. Father, let them know that you're still God, and you guard all by yourself, Father. Look upon them, it's a very, very special matter, Master. Father, right now, we ask that you will come in the midst of this meeting. And Master, give us oneness. Give us to be on one accord, Father, that we will come to handle your business, to be able to operate this great city, which is called Birmingham, Father. Master, we lift you up. We exalt your holy name. We love you. This is your servant prayer. We pray in the mighty name of Jesus, our ruling, reigning, and eternal Savior, the Christ. In all God's people, say amen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Woods. Council Pro Tem.
Present.
Council President.
Present, thank you. We, uh, our minutes are not ready from the November seventh, twenty twenty-three, through February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council.
Good morning.
And good morning to the public. Good to see everyone this morning. As President and Council, I would like to start with resharing some information. That is, along with Council Pro Tem, Wardine Alexander, who represents District Seven, there will be a town hall meeting this Thursday, February twenty-second, for citizens and residents in District Seven. The community is invited to come out at six P M., and the location is Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. That address is two one three five Jefferson Avenue Southwest. And the town hall meeting is designed for us to share some information and updates related to issues and things that have been happening in District Seven, but also to receive, take, and answer questions from residents in District Seven. So to you, Madam Pro Tem, I just want to encourage the residents of D seven, District Seven, to come on out this Thursday so we can collaborate and continue to move the district forward. I also want to reshare information about the city of Birmingham having a blood drive. Simple notion is help save a life, and the way to do that is by donating blood. It'll be next Wednesday, Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, at the Battle Auditorium from nine A M. to three P M. And want to encourage our city employees to participate, to register, and want to encourage those to register in advance. Please go to redcrossblood.org, look for Find My Drive, and enter the code B H M. And presenting donors will receive an e-gift card and can receive other things as well. Just our continued weekly note regarding the uniform cart delivery. All single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system, and businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts. And multi-family dwelling units of four or fewer may apply for carts at a fee per cart. In addition to that, Department of Public Works has been addressing and will continue to address issues on the case, by case basis, for residents on difficult terrain. And for any more and additional information, please go to birminghamal.gov/pickup for more information. At this time, I would like to call up the CEO of the Museum of Art, Dr. Graham Botcher, as well as any of his team members to join him. As they come forward, some pretty cool and exciting news Graham will share today. But the Birmingham Museum of Art has unveiled its newest exhibit, Heroes and Villains, The Art of the Disney Costume this past weekend, and there was much fanfare that Graham can share. But at the moment, I would like to pass the mic to him to share a little bit more about this exhibit.
Thank you, Mayor Woodson. Good morning, council members. It's good to see everyone this morning. I have the pleasure of talking about a really special exhibition that we have at the museum right now, Heroes and Villains, The Art of the Disney Costume. This is the first ticketed exhibition that we've done in nearly ten years. And we want to do something that can't be done with our permanent collection, and that's something you'll see increasingly from us going forward, bringing new and different opportunities to the citizens of the Magic City. So we decided to start that with a little Disney magic. Next image, please. It takes a village to, for a heavy lift like this, and I'm very grateful to our presenting sponsor, PNC, as well as the wonderful corporate community that we enjoy here in Birmingham, the Alabama Power Foundation, Vulcan Materials Company, Protective Life Foundation, and the Warner Foundation, among many other foundation and individual supporters. Next image. The exhibition includes seventy costumes from thirty-three live-action Disney productions. We have several Cinderellas. In fact, the first gallery that you'll see when you come to the exhibition showcases all of the different Cinderella costumes. It's Cinderella's Workshop. And so you'll see Brandy as Cinderella, her original costume, next image, as well as Lily James and the Swarovski crystal glass slipper. And I want to stress that these aren't facsimiles or replicas or reproductions. These are the actual costumes worn in the live-action films. This exhibition was organized with the Walt Disney Archives in Los Angeles, and we're only the third venue in the country. It's been to Michigan and Seattle. We're the first southern venue. Next image. We're also, you'll notice a lot of iconic costume. Angelina Jolie as Maleficent, next image. Johnny Depp as Captain Jack Sparrow, next image. Emily Blunt as Mary Poppins, and we have not only her umbrella, but her carpet bag. Next, please. You'll see costumes from Beauty and the Beast, next, such as Emma Watson's gown, or the costume worn by Luke Evans as Gaston, next. Danny DeVito from Dumbo, next, please. And more recently, the costumes from A Wrinkle in Time. You'll see Oprah Winfrey as Mrs. Witch, and we also have the costumes worn by Mindy Kaling and Reese Witherspoon. And you'll see costumes throughout the exhibition worn by countless stars in iconic roles. Meryl Streep as Amy Adams, Glenn Close as Cruella De Vil, Sacha Baron Cohen, Tim Allen from The Santa Claus, and many, many more. This exhibition runs for a full twenty-six weeks. It will close on August eighteenth. It's the longest engagement that we have ever had for a public exhibition at the Birmingham Museum of Art. And tickets are available at www artsbma.org. We're also opening the museum on Mondays to school groups called Magic Mondays, and thanks to the support of the Alabama Power Foundation, they're supporting free admission for school groups to be able to come through and experience the magic. So thank you for this opportunity to share a bit of the Disney magic with all of you this morning.
Thank you, Graham, and counsel, and to the public. I hope you take advantage of taking your family, children, to see what's on display at our Museum of Art. At this time, Council, I would like to acknowledge and have come up Phillips Academy, the girls' basketball team, and joining them are their coaches and some school officials that include their athletic director, Justin Kelly, and head coach Christina Watson. And I see everybody still sitting down. The short version, Council, is that we are extremely proud of these young ladies and their accomplishments. They represent themselves, their families, and especially their school and the district very well. And I just want to publicly say congratulations. At this time, who's first? Please introduce yourself.
I'm Christina Watson, the head coach for Phillips Academy. Firstly, I want to say good morning to you all, and thank you for this opportunity to be recognized. We would like to thank our administration for cultivating a spirit of excellence on and off the court. We also would like to thank our parents and our A D. for supporting us through all the wins and losses. And then lastly, but not least, I want to commend my players for giving a hundred and ten percent every time they stepped on the floor and trusting the process. I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves. First, I would like to introduce our assistant coach.
Good morning. I'm the assistant coach, Tamea Nelson.
Good morning. My name is Sarah McGee.
Good morning. My name is Chloe Jones.
Good morning. My name is Leah Ricks.
Good morning. My name is Ari McElroy.
Good morning. My name's Alana Simeon.
Good morning. My name is Lee Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Johnny Wilson.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of our administration, Dr. Ian Ziocha and Ms. Wiggins, they wasn't able to be here today. They are conducting professional development training with our teachers right now. But first, he wanted me to let you guys know, thank you guys for everything you guys do for Birmingham City Schools and also the city of Birmingham. We are very proud of our scholars, the hard work they put in, in the classrooms, and also on the basketball court. Thank you guys very much.
Do you want to speak?
Well, I guess we'll wait for after the picture. But I do want to say congratulations to you all. I do want to know what positions you all played. I'm very interested to see who was the point guard, the center.
We're going to make him come back and tell you.
Okay. But I'm really, I'm just going to talk while y'all take the picture. But I'm really proud of you all, especially having played basketball and coming from a basketball family. This isn't a small accomplishment you all have done, especially having good grades and playing sports. So hopefully, we see you guys on the court in high school, and hopefully in college. And once again, congratulations. And Coach, thank you for always instilling good morals and values in our young girls. So congratulations.
I'm a small forward. I'm a shooting guard.
I play point guard and shooting guard.
I'm a guard. I play shooting guard.
I play as the center.
I play foul forward.
They should go to school like right now. You have something you want to?
Yeah, real quick. Am I correct in saying that we have parents that are in the crowd as well? Can y'all stand up also? Let's let us celebrate, though.
So, Mr. President and Council, today is a school day. I know E for sun, but at this time, we'll let them be dismissed to make sure they can get back to school. Y'all not to go to school? Back to school? They say, don't do me. Okay. My bad. Stay if you want. Do whatever you want.
They had the day off yesterday.
Yeah, I guess they get, they out of school a lot, huh? So, Mr. President and Council, I got two more notes. Bear with me. I think the first one is very simple. We're going to continue to talk about our Connect Birmingham program. So I want to remind you, I want to remind our residents, and I want to remind our businesses about how they can help Birmingham police, how they can help be a better neighbor, how they can help themselves, and how, well, I like to call it a new form of neighborhood watch. But to ensure a safer and better community, this new initiative called Birmingham, I'm sorry, Connect Birmingham, Connect Birmingham. This program allows B P D. to collaborate with community to investigate criminal activity faster. Think of your Ring camera or any form of camera you have on the exterior of your home. As a business, think of any exterior camera you would have for your place of business. But we have a request, and that is for community members to consider sharing and integrating their cameras with Birmingham Police Department Real Crime Time Center. What this does is it allows for us a faster way of processing time when the crime occurs, basically in real time. And residents, as well as business owners, can register their camera, and that does not mean anyone can access a live video stream. Again, it does not mean we can access a live video stream, so your privacy is protected. But what it does allow is for B P D. investigators to contact you if an event or if a crime was to occur on your block or on your street or in your vicinity. And so for details, I would like to encourage residents and for those who would like to register their cameras to participate in this new form of neighborhood watch, to please go to birminghamal.gov/birminghamconnect. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/birminghamconnect. Nope, Connect Birmingham. Y'all were going to go to the wrong one, Connect Birmingham. I do, I do want to talk about the tragedy that occurred this weekend. In the last four, I would say, last four-plus days, Madam Chairwoman and to the entire council, I think our community has been reeling from a senseless acts of violence, where you had a quadruple homicide and a double homicide. And I think it's important to call victims' names. Cortez Ray, Dalton T J. Tatum, Kevin McGee, Terrell Edwards, Chris Norris, and Leah Webster. If you are not aware, Terrell Edwards was a city employee. He was originally worked for, he originally worked for.
If I can speak out of turn, Mr. Mayor, we have our hearts with you right now, with you and your family.
Yeah.
We want you to know, we got you, yeah.
Terrell Edwards. Terrell Edwards originally worked as a city employee with Public Works. And he transferred to, he transferred to Park and Rick. He had just clocked out at two thirty. Had a chance to go over to his mother's house over in Smithfield Public Housing. His cousin, Kevin McGee, picked him up. He wanted to go get his car washed. But you need to know more about Kevin McGee as well. You see, Kevin McGee had just applied to be a city employee, I want to say like February fifth. And he had just actually completed his agility test. So he was well on his way, had a C D L. license. So he was, he was about to become a part of our work family. So he was actually going to join his first cousin and be a city employee. But it wasn't just his first cousin he was joining to be a city employee. You see, Kevin's mother, Ms. Mary, is also a city employee. You've seen her. Trust me, all nine of you all have seen her. Because she's worked with, she's in the Division of Parking Enforcement for the police department. So you either come out of a meeting late, or you've been somewhere on the south side or north side of town, and you've seen her doing her job. But he wasn't just about to join his cousin. He wasn't just about to join his mother as a city employee. He was actually also about to join his great aunt, Ms. Tawanna Davis. And trust me, if you don't know her face, you know her voice, because she works down in nine one one three one one, and she's probably one of the biggest personalities down there. So yeah, I'm stumbling off the block to express, saying their names, calling their names, explaining that these are people who are literally our team employees. Or in the case of another victim, mother works for us, another team employee, great aunt, another team employee. These are, this affects our work family. These poor men are fathers. One of them's daughter finishes high school in a few months in May. So she won't get the chance to see her father when she walks across the stage, and he won't get a chance to see his daughter finish high school. And then you have this young couple, both expecting parents, both twenty years of age. They head home, and there's so many questions. There is a lot of angst and anger and sadness and frustration and a host of raw emotions, if you will. So a couple of things I want to share with you. One, B P D. Birmingham Police Department is literally doing everything they can to walk down and investigate every single lead in both of these issues, in both of these cases. And as I spoke with Chief Thurman, and as I spoke with the detectives and other B P D. leadership yesterday for quite some time, when you have something like this happen in our community, it's important that we enact justice as swiftly as possible. But turns out, the B P D. can't do it themselves. You see, when police are not, police don't witness a crime, any crime, but in this case, don't witness this. It takes people with information to come forward. There are many, many great things about Birmingham, and I can go on and on about those great things. But I do, Mr. President, if you'll allow me a few more minutes, and counsel, using this platform to talk about something that doesn't work for Birmingham. You see, the council, the mayor's office, and B P D., we charge uphill every day fighting a culture that promotes violence. We charge uphill every single day where a culture supports no snitching. We charge uphill every single day in a culture that, I'll just say it, there are too many people comfortable protecting shooters, housing them, giving them safe harbor, laying up with them, baby mamas, girlfriends, wives, whatever. Parents and siblings and friends who know what they're doing, know they pull triggers, know they're shooters, and give them safe haven. And as I stand here saying that out loud, it makes me think about some very unique history in our country's time where it's easy to point the finger at the people that are doing and committing the hurting. But it's the silence of those others who know they're doing it, it's way worse. Way worse. Way, way worse. Because each of these victims, well, five of them are sons. They're also fathers and nephews, and they have families. And Leah was pregnant, at minimum, the fourth generation of our, on my dad's side. So. We'll continue to do the work, but we need the community to participate. Because the finger will be pointed at leadership now to say, solve this crime, solve these homicides. And we can't do it without community participation. We can't do it without the community's help, we can't do it without the community coming forward. It turns out in Birmingham, Alabama, there are no secrets. Everybody knows something, everybody knows someone. Everybody knows what's happening in the streets. So I do want to encourage and implore community members to come forward. And for those who may have genuine fear, may have. Information that's credible and helpful. If you need safe haven and coming forward, whether that's. Temporary or permanent relocation. Or any other assistance, let us know. So we can be in the positions to open up those doors and resources for you. Major Turner was killed. It took well over a year for somebody to come forward with information. And I was a two-year-old. But with what happened Friday. There used to be something called No Women and Children, I think y'all have heard of that before. In this case, we got an unborn child. You would think. That somebody would be strong enough to come forward with information. Because when it's their family member, when it's their child. They demand justice. Well, we want to demand justice for these. Six victims and unborn child. We want to demand justice for their families. Because they deserve it. So, Mr. President, I. I took a lot of time this morning. And counsel, I took a lot of your time and I apologize. For four days, I haven't shed a tear, I've been worried about everybody else. For four days, I haven't had the best sleep, and when I have, I've had some, a few nightmares. Because I don't think women and unborn children should be killed. And I don't think people who just get off work. And just want to hang with their families should be killed, and people who want to go just to get their car washed should be killed. And I know you don't believe that either. So to you, Ms. Tate, to you, Mr. Williams, to. You, Ms. Alexander, to you, Mr. President, to you, Ms. Smitherman, and to you, Ms. Avon, and to you, Mr. Moore, and to you. Ms. Clark. And of course, to Mr. Woods, who's not here. There are a lot of things we can do with tax dollars. I know public safety is a concern for all of you. But on this one, the community is going to have to step up. That's where it is and that's what it is. But to our work family. To Ms. Mary, to Ms. Davis. Those in nine one one, three one one, the police department. To Ms. Shanae and our Park and Recreation family, to the Legion Field family. To all of the, our colleagues who know these families, who knew our. Future employee and our current employee. I just want to say that. The mayor's office is with you, we're thinking about you, we're praying with you and for you. To all the other victims who are also praying with you and praying for you, their families. And we will continue to do everything to bring the swiftest justice in some form of relief for these families. By catching the perpetrators who did this. And we need the community's help, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Entire council, thank you as well.
Thank you, Mayor Woodson. All right. Mr. Clark, at this time, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right. At this time, I'll read our. Statement on the Conduct of Business. All items designated our consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in. Addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda. Designated for public hearing. May request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could you please read the items designated as consent?
Consent agenda starts on page two with items. One. Three. We are, it's the requested withdrawal item two. By. I guess the law department?
Yes.
Okay. Let me pick back up with. Item. Seven on page four with the consent agenda. Item eight and nine as well, items eighty-nine are on consent, then page five, we have items ten, eleven. And twelve on consent. Page six. We have items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen on consent. Page seven, we have items seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen on consent. Page eight, we have items twenty and twenty-one on consent. Page nine, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on consent. And page ten, items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are on consent. Page eleven, items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are on consent. And on page twelve, we end the consent agenda with item number thirty-six, we have one addendum item.
Okay. This time, do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to add item number thirty-seven to the consent agenda. Addendum item.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
I'd like to. Point out on item number ten, it says recommended. Of economic development tourism, and it was actually in fact not recommended. On item number ten, and then I'd like to remove item number twenty-six. On page ten.
So just for clarification, item ten on page five, there was.
Receiving no recommendation. Recommendation, and then item, it can stay on consent, I just want to correct that, because it's the opposite. And then, item twenty-six. I'd like to remove from consent. On page ten.
Back to item ten, do you, well, let's just remove that one from the consent agenda as well. Item ten, page five. Other items. Okay, so. Also. Let's take item seven off. That's page four. Yes, that's why I'm removing it. Okay. So at this time. Do any members of the public wish to. Remove an item marked as public hearing from the consent agenda? Seeing none.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Yes.
Second.
All right.
So, Alexander and Williams?
Alexander and Williams. See what we got here, all right, let's try it. Voting should be open. Counselor number Clark. Okay, we'll look at it right quick, that vote should be up, Mr. President.
Consent agenda passes.
All right.
All right, first item, please.
Should be item two. Which. Was requested to be withdrawn, and then we'll go to item four. A resolution assenting to the vacation of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet of the right-of-way that. Is located parallel two in between Tenth Avenue South and Tenth Court South, and perpendicular two in between. Twenty-third Street South and Twenty-Fourth Street South, on behalf of Thomas and Carruthers III, on behalf of. Module on Tenth LLC, and Bradley Thomas Castro, on behalf of Magnolia Properties LLC owners. So that the owner can consolidate property in the hearing of all interested parties.
Who's the item?
This is the item P, permanent operation, I need UC first.
Second.
All right, since we got the computers, I'll do the roll call, but I'll put it in. Second was Counselor Alexander.
Yes, sir.
And Counselor Clark, motion. All right, this is for UC, Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Tate? Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President Oakley?
Aye.
All right, so we got the UC, need the motion on the item.
I move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
Counselor Moore, I believe this came through Community Development Committee?
Yes, it did. I'll go ahead and acknowledge.
Good morning, my name is Kim Spurrell, I serve as the City Zoning Administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. The case before you is subdivision case two thousand twenty-three dash eighty. This is a request to vacate. Two thousand eight hundred thirty-three square feet of right-of-way. I would note that it is currently unopened right-of-way, and this would be for a future development. The right-of-way vacation fee was set at one hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. On November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission. Recommended approval of this vacation request. And on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Community Development Committee. Also recommended approval of this vacation request. The applicants are present today if you have any questions for them.
Would the applicants like to come and speak to this item? Please state your name and your address.
Of course. Good morning, my name is Tom Carruthers, I'm with Red Rock Realty Group, my address is thirty-eight thirty-five Clinton Co Drive.
Morning, I'm Jonathan Shepard with TTL, and we're the engineers for the project, so. I think it was explained pretty well, so we're here to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Does counsel have any questions? All right, Mr. President?
All right. I believe we're ready for the vote.
Voting should be open, Counselor Clark, how would you like to vote?
Aye.
Counselors, remember Smithman? Thank you, that vote should be up.
All right, it's unanimous, items proved.
Thank you. Item five should be next. A resolution assenting to the vacation of three thousand nine hundred and fourteen square feet. Of the unopened right-of-way that is located parallel two in between Second Avenue South and Third. Avenue South, perpendicular two, and between Forty-Fourth Street South and Forty-Seventh Street South. On behalf of Mayhead, on behalf of. On the Trail LLC owners, so that the owner can consolidate property in hearing of all interested parties. Same situation, item of permanent operation, I need UC first.
Second.
Stuck it with my.
More.
More.
I'm sorry.
More.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Abbott, Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President Oakley?
Aye.
All right, item.
I move the item.
All right, item is before you.
Okay, Counselor Moore?
Yes, have you come back?
It's not coming up.
Once again, my name is Kim Spurrell, I serve as the City Zoning Administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. This item is subdivision case two thousand twenty-three dash eighty-one. This is a request to vacate unopened right-of-way that is three thousand nine hundred fourteen square feet. The right-of-way vacation fee was set at one thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. On November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission. Recommended approval of this vacation to the city council. And on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Community Development Committee also recommended approval of this vacation. The applicants are also present for this request, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Ms. Kim, does the council have any questions?
Yes. If you guys would just please explain sort of the overall goal of this project.
My name is May Head, I'm here on behalf of On the Trail, and I'm here with.
Jonathan Shepard with TTL, we're the engineer for the project.
So. For the council and the public, this, this. Piece of unopened right-of-way is located within the Continental Gen Company complex, is that correct?
It's adjacent to.
Adjacent to. And as I understand it, you guys have some, some plans for. Allowing this to be part of. Bigger plans to sort of open a pedestrian bicyclist corridor through, through that property? Can you sort of give some background?
What we'd love to do is be able to already take advantage of the. The trail that currently exists from, is part of the Freshwater Land Trust Trail and the Hugh Call Rotary Trail. And so that is on the front side of the property, there is an alley that is currently not used. In the middle of the property, and so that is what we're requesting today, is for the vacation of that. Area in the middle of the property, so that we can take advantage of the front, front side for pedestrian, biking, hiking, all of those types of things. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so. For those that are familiar with the area. The Freshwater Land Trust has. Done a lot of work over the years to. First develop. The extension of the Rotary Trail. And to the Hugh Call Trail that runs behind. Back Forty Beer Company and, and. Goes east through. Forty-first Street and on towards the Continental Gen Company property. And there's sort of a geographic bottleneck in that area that really limits the capacity to. Take the, the trail further east, so. Part of this project is to address that bottleneck and create a. You know, a corridor that allows that trail to continue on to the east and ultimately. Connect up to existing trail that, that gets you all the way over to Roughland Mountain Nature Preserve, so. This is a. I'm just pointing out that this is a critical sort of component of accomplishing that goal of creating that connectivity.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
Well, I have a question that's actually for Ms. Spurrell.
Well, I have a question that's actually for Ms. Spurrell. I noticed that the last item that we had, we had a vacation of an unopened alley with twenty-eight hundred square feet in it. And it was a hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents for the one-third vacation fee. And this one is thirty-nine hundred square feet, and it's one thousand one hundred eighty-seven twenty-five. So, I was wondering if you could explain to us how these fees are set? What are they based upon?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the vacation fees are based on the land value of the adjacent properties. So, we take the average land value of all abutting properties, and we use that to determine what the vacation fee will be.
Wow.
So, the, in the second case, in this current case, the adjacent land values were more than those in the previous case.
That's interesting. I just wondered because it was so striking, and the property on near Magnolia, you would think, would be very valuable property, but clearly it's not. So, that's interesting. I guess we'd have to talk to the county about that, wouldn't we? Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Counselor Williams.
Yeah, I have a question for you guys. So, a- after this vacation, are y'all going to be developing the, the trail yourselves or Freshwater Land Trust, or how's that gonna work?
Well, we, we would, uh, probably lean on the people who are experts in that, like the Freshwater Land Trust and other experts in the community, to develop the actual trail. We would just be there to help in whatever way we would ne- be necessary.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Should be open. President, I think. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
That should be item six, uh, in ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with North Star Soccer Ministries. Under which North Star Soccer Ministries will undertake a project and purchase two vacant lots known as Forty-five Twenty Inn, Forty-six oh one Fourteenth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one two. The organization would develop a soccer complex that will provide soccer-driven programs to serve the youth and their families in the city of Birmingham. City of, the city has agreed to make the property available to North Star Soccer Ministries at a use value of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in support of the project and, uh, utilizes amendment number seven seventy-two as it relates to the difference in the appraised value to support the economic development of a new business enterprise in the city and eliminating blight and blighting factors through the productive reuse of vacant and underutilized property, all of which inure to the economic health of the city and constitute important public benefits of the city and its citizens. This is an item of second reading. I'm sorry, motion please.
Should move.
Second.
Williams and Smithman.
All right, item is before you.
All right, Counselor Woods, I mean, I'm sorry, Counselor Moore.
It changed. It happened to you too.
Found to do that sooner or later. Counselor Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd actually like for us to, uh, suspend the rules, uh, for the community to be able to speak.
Sure, um, motion is, uh, s- temporarily suspend the rules to allow audience members to speak to this item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Uh, and if we could have spokesperson for Kingston Neighborhood, Madam President, Brenda Holyfield.
Good morning. Um, I'm Brenda Holyfield, forty-five hundred.
Move, move the mic.
Pull the mic down to you.
I thought I was tall. Um, Brenda Holyfield, forty-five hundred, Thirteenth Avenue North. Um, good morning, Council President O'Quinn, Protem Alexander, other council members, and Honorable Mayor. Um, this morning, I represent Kingston Neighborhood as their president, and we have... We have questions and, well, really, we just have concerns. Uh, we have not had the opportunity to just really speak with, uh, Mr. Neville. He's on our agenda for our meeting this coming Monday on the twenty-sixth, uh, where he could possibly answer our concerns. Our main concern is for the safety, the, the safety issue. Also, with traffic, we have a serious issue with speeding on Forty-fifth Street, and we're in the midst of getting, um, traffic calming, um, I don't want to call them bumps, but traffic calming on that street. Um, and also, Dupie Alternative is there, and that school operates from eight AM to eight PM, which, that still goes with safety as a concern. And parking, noise, and trash. We do have an issue with trash in the area. Our community mainly consists of seniors, and most that are represented here, uh, where this property is located, their home is in front of this location. And so, some of the seniors have voiced their concerns, especially with the noise and the traffic and safety. Um, and I would like to know, because it also buts my property as well, what would be future use in the event that the soccer does not continue on for years? What would be the use for that? We had hoped that we would have houses placed back there. Years ago, um, the same tract of land was Woodlawn Garden Apartments, which were demolished, and it is true that that property has been sitting there pretty much untended, maybe twice a year being, um, cut or sprayed. We hope for homes for, uh, senior citizens and disabled people or affordable homes. And so, we are here, um, to hopefully have those concerns addressed. We are concerned about our community. Um, there are a lot of empty lots, and we want homes there to keep the community thriving. Thank you for your time, Counselor Moore. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President.
All right.
Uh, if we could, um, have Mr. Neville, uh, with North Star.
Sure.
To speak to some of those, those concerns that the community has stated.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, if it's possible, uh, I have a drive that has this, that has some of the answers to some of those questions. If it's possible to on screen, great. If not, I'll just share from it, but, um...
Could have a member of our PIO team see if they can pull it up and on the monitors.
Only document on there, so it'll be easy. Okay, while she's doing that, uh, just one minute introduction. North Star Soccer Ministries has been impacting Nor- Birmingham youth through the game of soccer for more than twenty years. We are training kids in our values, responsible, resilient, reverent, through the team experience. Values-based coaching develops moral character. Success and learning skills is the surest way to develop confidence as transferable to other areas of life. Having our own field space that is dedicated, dedicated to soccer will bring greater stability to the program and will enhance our ability to educate and inspire. The North Star was the name of famed abolitionist, abolitionist Frederick Douglass newspaper published from eighteen forty-seven to eighteen fifty-one. The name North Star reflected the use by enslaved African-Americans found their way to freedom by following the North Star. Naming the field for Douglas will enable, will enhance our ability to draw upon this rich history as we continue to be, build values in the lives of our youth. We firmly believe that instilling these values in our youth will equip them to find their direction in life. It's our goal that youth coming through our program will be equipped to lead and have the knowledge and skill to impact their own communities, including Kingston. Developing this property is about increasing opportunities for a quality soccer program for city youth, but it is also about much more than soccer, in my mind. Uh, some specifics, addressing some of the concerns that were addressed. Um, and first of all, North Star Soccer, if this is approved, will be a good neighbor in Kingston Neighborhood, and I will be regularly available to meet with the Neighborhood Association in an ongoing effort to address concerns to the good of all. Um, as far as parking, quickly, uh, we have asked, um, Birmingham Department of Transportation to take a look at, in support of neighborhood concern already as far as traffic calming, we're very much in favor of that, whatever they would say. Uh, also, we've discussed in terms of safety, one of the sa- I'm very concerned about safety considerations for our participants. And, uh, one of the things I asked them to take a look at is whether there could be a partial street closing on Fourteenth Avenue, um, if not permanent, then at least at certain times, uh, so that our participants, our kids and families could cross the street from the parking lot to the field in complete safety. As far as traffic in the area, uh, the entrance gates for the field would be directly across the street from the parking lot. So, there would be no incentive for anyone, any parent coming to the field to park anywhere else because they'd have to walk further if they did. So, this is the, where, we will make this the clear, logical place to park. And on the sheet here, you'll see, according to what I've been able to figure out, uh, if we dedicate this space to parking, then, uh, we could, we, we would have the capacity for a three-hundred-car parking lot. Um, we project approximately, approximately one hundred eighty cars at one time on a Saturday during game day. If I'm wrong, well, there's space, um, on the other side of that. So, that would address that. Uh, we will certainly have, if, if participation is controlled to the parking space and the field, and not all across, you know, not with people coming from all across the neighborhood, then trash, any trash will be, um, should be contained to those same areas, and of course, we would have trash receptacles multiple. And we would commit to, we, we want a clean environment. We want a clean space, and we want a clean environment coming into that space. So, we will absolutely work with the neighborhood to ensure that. Um, uh, so, and as far as speeding through the neighborhood, that's, as, as I understood, that's already a concern of the neighborhood, and we would work with the neighborhood in that. Uh, I really have not had, seen that as an issue where we've been in other places, but we will absolutely be involved in, um, in, um, working against that. Um, so, I, we will be partners with the neighborhood. I would invite the neighborhood to be partners with us in impacting youth in the ways that we're proposing. Um, I understand neighborhood concerns. I raised my three children in the College Hills neighborhood. I served as neighborhood president for twelve years, and I still live there. And I understand the concerns of neighborhoods, and we will honor that. And I also, side point, TJ Tate was, um, a young man that I knew twenty-five years ago. Uh, I did a scouting program in that time. Later, we started soccer, and for a brief time, he played soccer with us as well. And last fall, he stopped by one of our practices inquiring about, um, getting his son involved. So, the news from last Friday resonates strongly. And my hope is that we can instill values in youth, develop leadership in youth that that can spread, and that can have an impact on these kinds of things for the future. Questions?
Counselor Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, based on what you've stated, uh, you said that you all would be able to create parking, uh, that would allow for, you said, a hundred and eighty parking spaces plus?
Oh, I said that we project that we would need a hundred eighty, but the space would allow for three hundred.
And that space would be located where geographically to, uh, Dupie School?
It'd be right next to it.
Right next to it. So, there are currently no houses or residents that are, uh, next to Dupie? Uh, so that wouldn't impact anybody's, you know, uh, housing space? Nobody would have to park on the street or in somebody's driveway or anything like that?
In fact, um, there's no reason why Dupie School couldn't use a portion of the parking lot as well, if that was helpful, uh, to them. But, but yeah, that's, there's no, there are no houses directly next to where we're talking about.
And are you all planning on putting, uh, some type of stadium out on the property or, or, uh, bleacher seating? I'm sorry.
Oh, bleacher seating?
Yeah, bleacher sta- seating.
Probably, uh, you know, that'd be rain to be determined. The problem, why I say probably is because the field space will be flexible, and it'll shift around as far as how it's utilized, depending on the age group that is playing on it. So, a little bit of bleacher seating is helpful for parents who didn't bring their chairs, but honestly, they will want to move to wherever their games are, so, um, but, um, so I, I'm not sure. That's a detail that will...
And lastly, you said that you all would have somebody dedicated to being able to pick up trash and...
Yes, yes.
Clean up, uh, the community and...
We have to do that, yes. Yes.
Got you. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, um, question, um, so I know that historically, there's been some, you know, um, environmental, you know, particularly flooding issues sort of in this area. I mean, it kind of backs up to, to Village Creek. I was just wondering about the, the history of the property and, and how did the, the city come about, you know, acquiring that? Um, and, you know, wha- what's the background on the property, if anybody can provide that?
Mr. President, um, unfortunately, at this time, I, I just spoke with operations. Uh, we're not in a position to provide any background, um, as relates to immediate information on the history of this, of this pro- of this land.
Okay.
Counselor Clark.
I have some sketchy history. Um, these, this city had an interest in the property when it was Woodlawn Gardens Apartments, and there was a failure on the part of the developer to pay the mortgage. And so, the city, um, did not, was not able to get a deed in lieu of foreclosure, but ended up foreclosing on the property. That's my sketchy history, but it's, it's from long ago. And it was a nuisance property, uh, after that time. Um, it's an interesting story, so...
So, um, so do we have an estimation of how long this property's been sitting vacant?
I do. If, uh, I, I looked up and saw a demolition. I'm not sure exactly when it was demolished, but a demolition process twenty years ago.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Should be open. Got everybody, yeah. That's everybody. All right, that vote should be up.
Thank you. That item passes. Next item, please.
Should be headed to item number seven. Item seven, an ordinance to further amend the Neighborhood Allocation Fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four by transferring one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars from Kingston Neighborhood Association and appropriating one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to Department of Transportation, R and M Infrastructure Street, and traffic signs purchased, and install six speedboats on the listed location Forty-Fifth Street North between Twelfth and Fourteenth Avenue North, Ninth Terrace North between Forty-Fifth and Forty-fourth Street North, and Forty-Fourth Place North between Twelfth and Thirteenth Avenue North. Motion to get the item before us first.
Counselor Williams and Counselor Tate.
All right, item before you, and we have a request for a delay.
All right, so, um, I under-
All right, so I understand that the administration is requesting a four-week delay. So make a motion that we delay this item for four weeks.
All right.
Second by Counselor Smitherman.
All right, one second, please. And voting should be open right about now. That looks like Counselor Member Clark. That vote should be up for the delay. Oh, camera in the back. Let me just tell you what the vote is. Everyone voted yes.
Okay, unanimous, so we'll have four-week delay on that item. Next item, please.
All right, let's go to number 10. Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute for, and as the act of said city, one, a real estate purchase and sale agreement with positive development LLC. Under which the city will purchase from positive development certain real property consisting of commercial building located, consisting of a commercial building located at 735 Eighth Avenue West, vacant land located at 721 Eighth Avenue West, and vacant land located at 717 Eighth Avenue West for a purchase price of $250,000, with such property to be used for future development. Motion, please.
Smitherman and Tate?
All right, I have it before you.
Okay. Questions on the sign? Counselor Williams, did I understand correctly that there was a, no, a, there was no recommendation, like as in not a unfavorable recommendation, but there's just no recommendation?
No, I think it was a recommendation of no, but I think Ms. Clark, and I spoke about it for at nauseam at Economic Development, about the purchase price of the property and the overall goal of what's going on, so. Anyway, that's what happened in Economic Development.
Okay, so this was heard by Economic Development and Budget and Finance. Budget Finance Committee recommended in favor, I believe. Yes. Okay. Seeing no additional questions, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All right.
Wait, okay.
Did I miss that? Why was there no recommendation from your committee?
I think at the end of the day, the, the purchase price being well over the appraised value was a problem for us.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark could probably speak to it more as a real estate expert.
Yeah, so the appraisal presented to us, we're not sure how, how old it was, but it was below the recommended, what?
Attorney King?
I recommend we go into executive session if we're going to discuss detail about this matter. And I can declare it if necessary.
What's the wish of counsel?
Can I, can I ask Ms. King a question right quick? So, Mr. President, may I comment? After further review, my concerns were satisfied by the overall assessment.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to vote.
Voting should be up. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Thank you, next item.
I think we're going to item number 26. Item 26, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Train U.S. Incorporated doing business as Train Birmingham for the HVAC products and related services needed in unit pricing, filed in office of the purchasing agent for a period of one year, contingent upon council approval for the City of Birmingham Public Works Department per Omni Partners Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 3341. Motion, please.
Abbott and Smitherman?
All right. I have it before you.
Questions? Counselor Abbott, did you have a question on this one, or?
I didn't take it off. I don't know who did.
Counselor Williams?
I took it off only so I could abstain, so no question.
Okay. All right, we're ready for the vote.
Should be open. That vote should be up. Okay.
Since it's not, will you acknowledge my abstention, please?
Everyone voted yes, they had one abstention, Counselor Williams.
All right, thank you, that item passes.
Time has elapsed on the votes.
There any additional items?
Should be item 34 and 35. Item 34, a resolution setting a public hearing March the 19th, 2024, to consider adoption of a resolution ascending to the vacation of 6,757 square feet of right-of-way. It's located parallel to and between 40th Street North and 42nd Place North, and perpendicular to and between 10th Avenue North and 11th Court North, located at 4,000 and 4,001 Richard Arrington Boulevard, Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard Birmingham, and in behalf of Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United Central LLC owner, so that the owner can consolidate the property, case number S U B 2023-86. You want me to go ahead with 37? 35, I'm sorry. Mr. President, you let me go ahead with 35 as well?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Item 35, a resolution setting a public hearing March the 19th, 2024, to consider the adoption of a resolution ascending to the vacation of 23,760 square feet of the right-of-way. It's located parallel to and between 16th Avenue South and 22nd Street South, and perpendicular to and between 21st Place South and Red Mountain Expressway, located at 2149 16th Avenue South and 2141 17th Avenue South Birmingham, in behalf of Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United Central LLC owner, so that the owner can consolidate the property, case number S U B 2024-3. And motion will be for both items.
Williams and Tate?
All right. Williams and Tate. And voting should be open
Okay.
Right about now. And that vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. And I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Clark, are you ready for your announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Neighborhood meetings this week in District Eight. We've got the Graymont Neighborhood Meeting Wednesday at 4:30 at the Smithfield Branch Library. This past weekend, the Birmingham Crossplex hosted the 2024 SWAC Men's and Women's Indoor Track and Field Championship. Congratulations to Florida A&amp;M University's women's team and Texas Southern University's men's team for winning this year's title. If you still have a need for speed, you're in luck, because the Ohio Valley Conference will host its men's and women's indoor track and field championship at the Crossplex on February 21st and 22nd. So let's give our visitors to the West Side a warm welcome. The Five Points West Regional Library will host a screening of The Color Purple, that's tomorrow at 11:30. So if you want to come out and see that film with your neighbors and have some fun, please go to the library for that event. Also, The Literacy Partners, Inc., are hosting a free virtual reading of The Bluest Eye to honor the legacy of, of author Toni Morrison this Black History Month, with an amazing cast of readers, including Birmingham's own Angela Davis. The reading will take place on February 28th and 29th. Tickets are required but are free. You can visit events.literacypartners.org/black-history-month-2024 for more information. And, and if you're looking for a fun way to get active and meet and chat with your neighbors for, during a leisurely walk, you can join us every Thursday morning, weather permitting, for a walk around the Crossplex. We meet at the Starbucks and start promptly at 8:00 a.m. All paces are welcome. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings that are taking place. We have the Harriman Park Neighborhood that will meet on Thursday at 6:30 at the Harriman Park Rec Center. We also have Norwood that will meet on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. at the Norwood Community Center. Community Development Committee will meet tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. in council chambers. And we also will have the Park and Rec meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at Legion Field. We have summer camp coming up for Park and Rec. Take place Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Girls and boys ages five through 12. The first session begins June the 10th through the 28th. The second session begins July 8th through the 26th. If you would like to get more information about summer camp, please give a call to 205-254-2303 or 205-254-2391. Also, broken record, but we're still hiring for lifeguards. If you would like to join the team, please call Secretary Sewell, not our Congresswoman, Hiring will take place now through May the 10th. And so if you are willing and able, please make sure that you give them a call. Lastly, 10 years ago today, my grandmother actually passed away. One of the most beautiful human beings and some of the best cooking you would ever have in your life. And it was one of the first losses that I ever experienced that was extremely close to me. Because me and my grandmother were really close, Evelyn Moore. And my family, on an annual basis, goes and changes out the flowers on her grave on her birthday in July, and they do this every year. And I, I say that because, you know, I couldn't imagine not being able to, you know, show my respect, pay my honor to my grandmother who meant so much to me. Recently, I received a call about a family who, you know, is unable to do the same thing as our memorial. They stated to me that, you know, they buried their grandfather some time ago and went back to pay their respects, and his headstone was missing. They buried their grandmother, you know, a month later and replaced the headstone, but went back another month later to go and pay their respects to both of their grandparents, and the headstone was missing again. And that's a, that's a real huge problem, because you're reopening a wound that, you know, people have already, are already trying to heal from. And so I wanted to, you know, just give voice to their frustration and let them know that, you know, they've reached out to our office. We are currently in the process of, you know, researching and learning about this process, learning about this issue, to figure out how we can best serve this family. I know that several years ago, this was a concern for this council as well. I want to say probably in 2016. And so, obviously, the, the way forward then was not, you know, strong enough, or, you know, things still need to be worked on. And so I just wanted to state publicly that, you know, our office is working to, to really address that issue and really learn more about how we can better serve. So, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 28th at 3:30 p.m. in the council chambers, so that's next Wednesday on my, my nephew's and my granddaughter's birthday. So I won't forget. Neighborhood Association meetings, tonight, we have the Five Points South Neighborhood Meeting at 6 o'clock at the Highlands United Methodist Church. And this coming Monday, we'll have the Crestwood South Neighborhood Meeting that's held at the Jewish Community Center at 6:30. I wanted to say that we attended the Heroes and Villains at the Museum of Art on Friday. Friday night. Time flies, you're having a good time anyway. It was, it was really great. And we didn't really know what to expect, you know, a bunch of costumes, you know, what's the big deal? But it turned out to be a big deal. And I wanted to encourage everybody to go, because it's, it's fun. And you get to, you get to see what the creators of the costumes were thinking, because they tell you. And you see the costumes, and then you, you get to see the actors and actresses that actually were in those costumes in the movies. And so it turned out to be a lot more exciting than I was expecting. I mean, I was expecting a bunch of old clothes, but it wasn't that way. So I encourage people to go. And the thing that we noticed was that there were a lot of parents coming with their little girls, and there were occasion, occasionally little boys. And the little boys looked unenthusiastic until they saw the pirates and the monsters and the, you know, all the villains are always quite attractive to young men. I don't know why. But anyway, so we had a good time, and we encourage everybody, the, the, it's going to be here for six months, which is the longest I've ever heard of a, a traveling show coming and staying. So I just encourage folks to go. Now, back to my usual about 311. If you see a problem in your neighborhood, do not just complain to your neighbor. Call 311, put the app, the MyBeHim 311 app on your phone, take a picture of the problem. You know, nothing will happen if people don't get active in their own neighborhoods and try to make them better. So use the 311 phone number, and if you, if you really like to take pictures of problems, get the app and just go to town. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Smitherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as neighborhood meetings, Counselor Abbott already mentioned, Five Point South Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at 6:00 p.m. And then Woodland Park Neighborhood Meeting is this Monday at 6:00 p.m. at Woodland Church of Christ. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet this Monday at 3:30 p.m. here in the chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Also, I am very excited, because we are, well, I'll be hosting the third annual You Speak, a celebration of Black history, along with Red Mountain Theater. I think Counselors, my staff gave you all invitation, but it'll be this Friday, starting at noon and ending at 1:30. It's free to the public. We have several schools participating, Ramsey, Huffman, J.O., Winona High School, Indian Springs, Hemp Hill Elementary, Paul W. Bryant High School in Tuscaloosa, and the Jefferson County Academy of Theater and Dance. Also, we will have special performance by the cast members of Red Mountain Theater's The Color Purple. So I think it'll be really great. We have about 100 students that participate in different forms of arts, from dance to spoken words to art. So really being able to allow the kids to freely express themselves. And I came up with this idea, because a lot of times, a lot of our schools don't have Black history in my programs, and I want our, our kids to experience working with and be able to perform on a professional stage. So I'm really excited about this. So everybody, please come during your lunch break, just to show support to the kids. It really means a lot to them. Also, I'm, I'm surprised, I, I don't know if Counselor Williams was going to announce this, but Birmingham Restaurant Week Winter Edition starts this week, February 22nd and March 3rd. Tonight, they're going to have their preview party. I think you, you can still get tickets on Eventbrite, they're $35. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 at Work Play, and this is the 14th year. So really, we need to support our local businesses and restaurants. They have some good deals, honestly, like $10 breakfast, $5 breakfast, $10 lunches. So hopefully, everybody can go out and participate. And then lastly, this past Saturday morning, I talked to young- And then lastly, this past Saturday morning, I talked to young people at two different events. One was called Elect Her Panel Discussion and the Alpha's Lead Academy. Talked with them about politics with the Alpha's. I also talked about being an attorney, how to become one, just the process of billing, what we do day to day, how we help people important to know your rights, and just continue for them to avoid their pains on issues that matter. Something that really, really like, really kind of shook me, honestly, was the Elect Her Panel. There was a young lady, she actually just lost her friend the night before to gun violence. And I asked her the question, I think we don't ever really ask our kids, how are you doing? She ended up in tears because she never really had processed it. And I don't know what the solution is based off the mayor, what Council Tate's work has said, even Council Williams. What's the solution? Because I was telling her, you're going through the same things I feel like I went through when I was a teenager. Like, I didn't lose anybody, but I remember people losing, you know, people, my friends losing friends, you know, going to parties and literally, by the grace of God, leaving and there's a shootout. There has to be some type of break in this history of violence from Birmingham. So I don't know if a lot of people really watch our council meeting, but I hope this really touches somebody, what we talked about today. And if not for yourselves, for our kids, they deserve something better. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Smithman. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM on Zoom. And the meeting ID is eight seven three seven two five six oh three three seven. The passcode is three nine five seven nine one. Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at five PM at the Evergreen Community Center. South Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight. At six PM at Livelife Baptist Church. Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at Daniel Payne Middle School. Innen Ridge Neighborhood will be on Thursday. And they also meet on conference call and you can dial in at two five three two one five eight seven eight two. And that meeting ID is eight three five six five eight six one nine five five. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the twenty seventh at one PM. Please submit agenda items via email by Wednesday, February twenty first and later than twelve noon to patrice.collins@birminghamal.gov, And I want to echo and just piggyback off what Council Smithman said and offer my condolences to the mayor and to all of the families that lost love once affected by the tragic loss of gun violence. It is coming up on the anniversary of my nephew, three years ago, stepping off a plane from Oakland, going out, doing social justice work, as I do. And since this gun violence, as Council Smithman, we've heard the mayor say here today, lives that were lost, you know, to gun violence. What I do know and what I will continue to say, and what I will continue to press upon the administration, my colleagues, county, state, federal agencies, that we cannot police our way out of this. The investments have to be made into community. It has to be made into credible voices. The mayor spoke here this morning that the community has to come together and play their part. You can no longer turn a blind eye to violence that is destroying communities. Healing has to take place. Trauma to trust has to take place. When you look across the country and you see violence being reduced in areas, this is not rocket science. We just got to make the investments. We got to pull together, we got to make the investments. And we got to be pressing upon those, not just at the local level, but at the state and federal levels to drive dollars, you know, back into community. Philanthropic foundations to drive, you know, funding back into communities to get people on the ground as violent interrupters and people that want to do their work. I would highly recommend that you reach out to our partners. We have the Crescent Center, we have the Restore Program, we have O A A, the H V I P, where some deep investments have been made into gun violence. But it's going to take much more than that. And just to witness and see, you know, not being a witness, but to hear senseless act of violence being taken, people being taken from their families, the pain, the suffering, looking at the news, seeing families wail, people crying, you know, that, 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 that just cuts so deep. It's, it's unfathom, you know, to see the things that people have no regard, no respect for life. And who in the world could do, as the mayor said, kill a pregnant female? That, that, that's just, you know, I'm, it's, 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 ugh. So I'm just going to say this, that we got to come together and make public safety, community safety, a priority. It has to be a priority. And Mr. Mayor, I want to thank him, he's, he's not in here, but just, you know, I, I just cannot imagine. And I'm, you know, I have a son. But I'm, you know, just to see my sister-in-law Sunday, you know, the trauma, being tra, re-traumatized all over again. And again, my heart goes out, you know, to Shanae, the people at Legion Field and all employees and everybody else that's affected by this. My heart goes out to Ms. India Bailey, because one of those people were her relative. And so, you know, this hits closely, but I'm going to press upon this council and the administration, our county partners, put these differences aside, lead its politic in where it is. It's time to step up and show people that we really care about violence.
Thank you, Council Tate. Council Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in the, in the same light of what Ms. Tate was just saying, I think that, that, and what the mayor spoke of at the, at the beginning of this meeting is, you know, there's a lot of good points that have been made. And I think that we're all devastated as a city, knowing that our coworkers, their families, and really the whole community, when you have a weekend of violence like we had this past weekend, are, are humbled and are mourning. They all deserve a resolution of sympathy. But I would like to make one, well, we should make one for, for all six victims. So I'd like to have, make a motion that we make a resolution of sympathy for all six victims.
All, we're doing separate or condensed?
Let's do it all together and then have one more after that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. All together right now.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
On the poll, that's for you see.
Motion on the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, close to the District Two family, T J Tate or Talton was one of the victims. And our hearts go out specifically to their families, well, from our office. All six deserve sympathy, but I just wanted to say the name of T J Tate since it did hit real close to, to our office. Creston Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, February twenty second at six o'clock at Hope Church. Southeast Lake Neighborhood will be meeting the twenty sixth at six o'clock at Southeast Lake United Methodist Church. Crestwood South will be meeting at six thirty at the J C C. Economic Development and Tourism will be today at eleven thirty or maybe a little bit earlier if possible. Maybe not. And then, yes, Ms. Smithman, Restaurant Week is, starts this Thursday officially, the twenty second through the third. There's a lot of good restaurants and deals that range from five to sixty dollars. So whatever your price range is, it's a great way to support our local economy and restaurants. And it's more than just the restaurants you'd think of. There's a ton of options. There's food trucks, there's bars, there's restaurants I haven't even heard of, which is my favorite part. And so, and there's, and there's also a Wineology event for those of us that enjoy wine, which I am one of. I publicly drink. So anyway, that, I'm very excited about Restaurant Week and hope that everybody can participate and support our local mom and pop restaurants here in Birmingham. Thank you, Mr. Preston.
All right. Thank you, Council Williams. Pratim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. I do want to thank the mayor administrative team and Capitol Improvements team. I was so excited on Sa- Sunday. Went to a meeting at the Oxmoor Community Center. And one of the first Capitol projects that I had wanted to have completed after being a part of the council was the parking lot expansion there at the community center. We added over forty plus additional parking spaces. And this helps to alleviate and help to increase safety. No longer having, when we have large events there at the community center, there's no longer the need to park within the subdivision across the street. So just very excited to see that completed. It looks very nice. Thank you all. So anyone that's going there, I hope you'll enjoy those additional parking spaces. On Sunday, I also had the opportunity to attend the Soul Food Sunday event. And this is where they presented awards to different individuals within the community for the service that they have provided. And so I just want to continue to thank Mrs. Gwen Cook Bibb, president of the East Brownsville Neighborhood. She was honored as being a shero in the community. So congratulations to her. As far as neighborhood meetings this week, tonight, the Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet at six thirty PM. That's at the Lifting Christ Worship Center and that's at one thousand one Pine View Road. I won't be in attendance this evening because of a conflict, but we will have District Seven staff there to meet with the neighbors and to discuss any issues or concerns they have. Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Grisella Heights and East Brownsville today. Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Roosevelt City on Wednesday. And I want to say hello to our Roosevelt Neighborhood Association President, Mr. Creer, who's present today. Thursday, as Mayor Whitman has already discussed, we will have the District Seven Town Hall, the mayor's District Seven Town Hall. I'll be joining him there at six PM at Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church. That's twenty one thirty five Jefferson Avenue Southwest. I'm really encouraging everyone in District Seven to come out. There'll be updates talking about things that are going on within the city as well as the district. I'm highly competitive. I want to have more people at the D Seven one than we had at District Five. So we got a challenge going on. So come on, D Seven. Don't wait to six o'clock to come. I want you there in the seats at six and we'll have some great conversations. So please come on out. Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Germania Park South also on Thursday. Then on Monday, the Tarfley City Neighborhood will meet at six thirty at the Mary Doris Center. And Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Powderly on Monday, February twenty sixth. Those are all my announcements, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. For D Five, we have several Neighborhood Association meets, meetings over the next week. Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Downtown Central Library. Southside Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday at six PM at the South Precinct. Southeast Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday at the East Lake United Methodist Church at six PM. And Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet next Tuesday, February twenty seventh at six PM at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center. Have very, I feel like this is a very important announcement. This week, Alabama Possible is sponsoring Alabama Goes to College, College Application Week, which gives students the opportunity to apply for college for free to over fifty-five colleges and universities, free of charge. There's no application fee. So again, if you're a student looking to go to college, you can apply to, in one go, fifty-five colleges and universities for no, no fee. To get more information, please visit www.alabamapossible.org. That's www.alabamapossible.org. Also want folks to know that we have a committee of the whole meeting this afternoon, starting at two PM. The main item on the agenda is review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual financial, annual comprehensive financial report, i.e. the city audit. So if, you know, one of our most important jobs as the council is to make sure that the city remains in good financial standing. And so this is a very important report. If you would like, you can join us here in person in the council chambers for that meeting. Again, that starts at two PM. And the meeting will also be livestreamed. So at this time, we will hear from our public speakers. Mr. Clark?
Curtis Hammond and Sheila Scruggs.
Could you come to the mic, please, state your name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Curtis Hammond, fourteen seventeen, Avenue D. Just here to talk to you guys today about.
Speaking to the mic, please.
Okay. Here to speak to you guys today about a development that I came before you, about three years ago. Representing organization Bethel Enslie Action Task. They were seeking funds to build affordable housing in Innen Ridge community. The application was done, I did the application, it was done based on my financials and my abilities to build houses. After you guys approved, after you guys approved this four hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, after you guys approved it, I loaned them about twenty thousand dollars to purchase the land that they needed to complete the transaction. After that, the board president and the executive director refused to communicate with me. I reached out to Community Development here, letting them know that I'm no longer working with this organization. The application that you guys approved was approved based off of my financials. I let Community Development know that they would be working with an organization that was acting unethically, did not have the capacity to do the project. And I heard back that Community Development would not be talking to me anymore. This was March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Fast forward to today, you guys gave them four hundred and forty thousand dollars or y'all approved the city to give them four hundred and forty thousand dollars. They have built one and a half houses, supposed to be affordable houses. They listed them for over two hundred thousand. The one that they did complete had granite countertops. It took over a year after the permit was pulled to complete that property. The, they have started a second property. The third property has not even been started. And this was, you guys approved this in two thousand and twenty-one. Since then, Ms. Scruggs, she was with the organization. She contacted me and I think she would want to have some to say to you guys.
Hi, I'm Sheila Scruggs, live at fourteen seventeen Avenue D. I was, I've been on the board for over fifteen years. And I've lived in the community where Beat started building houses. I live in the community. So talking of saying, what he was saying about building the houses and having money, you all giving money towards that, I was on the account during that time. And I would see what the executive director would do with the funds that you all A C H in our account. She would take that, transfer money out to do, pay this, pay that, and pay that, you know? So we never did pay him. We had the funds to pay him years ago. But. Yeah, for building the house. So we never did pay him. You know, she, she wasn't using the money to build a house. The funds that you all were getting, you know, putting in the A C H in our account. I was the only somebody on the account. So after I brought it to her attention and the board president, which is the pastor of my church, I brought it to their attention. Nothing was done. They ignored it. We had checks, we had checks to bounce in that account. I brought that to their attention. It was over three thousand dollars bounced. I brought it to their attention. They didn't want to hear it. So what they did, they went and took me off the account without me knowing, without me being present, didn't. without me being present, didn't let the full board know that they were doing that. So since then, I don't have, I don't know what they're doing, what they're doing with the money and all of that. So they was trying to quiet me. I'm bringing it to their attention, but they were ignoring it, letting the executive director run it. The president was letting her do everything, everything. I, I even had meetings with the both of them to let them know. Because I've been with Beat, you know, for a long time, over fifteen years. And I've never had an executive director and a president to act in this way with the funds. And I told them that they were misappropriating. Nothing has been done since, and they're still doing it. I, I'm not on their account anymore, so.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Robert Banks. How y'all doing, city in there? How y'all doing, city in there? Um, I'm here basically about the gun violence in the city. First and foremost, we have to, we have to do better as a community. We know that. We know with no snitch rule, we know all of that. But basically, it's gonna take y'all too. Y'all mentioned T J. Not one of y'all never supported that man. Y'all ain't never went to that car wash. Y'all ain't never been on the car wash. The city workers that worked for the city, we already know they was at the bottom of the total poor where they worked at. They ain't had no great job at the city, but they changed their life because they come off the street. Let's be real with you. Anytime you got young men trying to change their life, it's gonna be some people ain't gonna forget the changes that they make and their parents gonna come about. The young lady that got killed, we found out that she was pregnant because of what the mother mentioned. Those that's going to kill, they don't care nothing about she pregnant or don't even know she pregnant. They going to kill the man, the one that's getting in trouble, an innocent woman. Because guess what? She's clinging on to somebody she think that love her. At the end of the day, he don't love her in the streets. Don't nobody know what he doing? The mama can get on TV, the auntie, everybody, parents want to get on TV and act like their child was this and that. But when your child out here in the streets doing this and that, we ain't owing up to it. And the moment they get into something, they gonna bring somebody else into it, and here we go a whole self-destruction. You got four men, three o'clock in the daytime on Southern Street. And you gonna sit up here and tell me, ain't nobody outside, they outside all the time on Southern Street. But you got four, four that's from Smithfield Community. Yeah, you can mention his mother and his auntie that worked for the city. Terry McGee worked for the city too. That's his daddy. That's his uncle. So you got Terry McGee. You got fat and skinny that lost a son and a nephew at one time. So you gonna sit up here and tell me that vengeance ain't gonna go through certain neighborhoods? You think it's just gonna stop with them? No, it ain't gonna stop. We can sit up here all day and say, what's the solution? Why is the most question asked? We gotta do action. We gotta stop asking questions. Y'all got to come on out there right there and help. We need Birmingham police to help without the uniforms on. We need Mel Woofin out there. He's already seen it from his brother, from his nephew, and now a close relative too. He's already seen it. Some of y'all know some of the individuals that have lost their life. But if you really truly care about the family, if you really empathizing with them, putting yourself in that position, then what you'll do is come on out in the neighborhood, walk the neighborhoods, get in the neighborhood. Because it's gonna take everybody. It's gonna take everybody. We can't police our way out of, like you said. We can't do that. But I don't see no city councils in the neigh- I ain't see the city councils yet that went to that neighborhood when they got killed. I ain't see nobody walk that neighborhood. They ain't gonna talk to the police. It's simple. They ain't gonna talk to the police. But if you build a relationship with them, they'll talk to you. Y'all got some nieces, nephews, grandchildren that know some of these same individuals that got killed. You got to press them. It's stored at home. You got to tell them, kid, no snitching rule, because it'll be at your front door too. Four girls got killed, September fifteenth, national news. Now four black men got killed, fifty-something years later. This is not a coincidence. Every man was targeted. You ever heard of a switch? We took them out the household, now they put them on guns. If you got a hundred rounds, a hundred rounds, it's coming out in less than a minute. So that mean, when they let the bullet go, everything that's in front of them gone. School got out at three o'clock. It wasn't no implicated on it. They still let school out. So how horrific is that for a mindset, for a child to walk out of school and see four bodies, three bodies on the ground covered up? How horrific is that? That's traumatizing. Some of them gonna think it's gangster. Some of them not. Some of them afraid right now. Do you know how the children doing at Park High School right now? Can anyone y'all tell me? Nobody can tell me because y'all ain't checked on it. Have you ever walked to a neighborhood, district eight, besides the next time?
Mr. Banks, can you, can you wrap up your comments?
Because I seen. If we don't do this, Mr. President, in District Five, you don't have a virus that they got in seven, eight, and nine. So it not gonna be a concern to you. But seven, eight, and nine, that's the most virus in the western side of Birmingham. That's where the virus is. City council seventy percent black like the city is. Eighty percent blacks dying by gun violence.
Next speaker, please.
Douglas Young. I think he did very well. He didn't give much solution, but he spoke a very good speech. My name's Douglas Young. I'm not gonna give my address this time because last time I was supposed to come to a meeting, I woke up in my Tazza flat on my car. It was the craziest thing ever, man. I didn't expect that. But, and also, I'm, I'm pretty big in like my area of expertise, so I don't want to give my address. But first and foremost, I'm gonna step back because my voice projects. I sent the FOIA request. I'm not sure if you guys received it. I, I got all the information back from the governor's office, the finance department, but I sent the FOIA request as well as an executive office to the president, which basically just puts everyone on notice in your professional and personal capacity as trustees of the public. And it basically just holds everyone responsible, not just in their public, just say, hey, this is just a title. Now everyone can be held responsible to say, hey, you didn't do your job or you went over and did something that you shouldn't have done. You got to understand, Mr. President, I hope that you teach everyone about estate management. That's the most important thing here, is understanding mismanagement of estates and fiduciary responsibilities. So now that I put that out there, again, I sent over FOIA requests. I received the states, I received the governors, the finance department, but I haven't received anything as Birmingham right now. So my position as general executive, and I call myself the executive because I know how to manage and I know how to administer my will in a sense. So I'm gonna share a few things. It's gonna be very fast, y'all. And just use this as something to learn and, and watch this video. The first thing I wanted to go over is, I was flying in, I fly airplanes. I flew in this morning, flying an airplane, and I realized not much activity come from the Birmingham Airport. I remember J T was saying something about this. I text him, no offense. I texted J T and I was like, bro, what's going on? Because I actually know him from when I was younger. I didn't receive anything back. It didn't hurt me at all because I understand, I understand how it goes. But I said, respect, bro, but I'm gonna handle this in a way that we can move this ball forward. So as I was flying into Birmingham this morning, I realized Woodland, Hayes, all of those schools should have pilot programs. Do you know how fun it is to fly an airplane? It's, it's an experience that you never get to experience. Being on the ground is, is one thing, but once you get elevated, you see the world at a whole different level. We need someone from the airport to go into these high schools and bring out pilots. The world needs pilots. It's a highly, highly paid profession. So I would recommend J T, also Mr. Woods, because I believe that's his district. He's having a contractor meeting. We need to get pilots or pilot training in these schools. Um, that's, I'm done with that. I wanted to talk to the mayor. I talked to him outside. I saw him up here crying. I said, bro, no matter what's going on in your life, you do not bring that here. You delegate someone and you let someone else share that. Because people, as you being a mayor, people will see you as weak. I know it sounds bad. I know it does. But when you got thousands of young men and thousands of young women looking up to you, they, they see that as weakness. They see that as I won. They don't see that as sympathizing. They do not. And I'm not sharing this to be mean or anyone. Y'all just take this in, don't listen or listen. But these are serious concerns from an executive. I shared with him out there. He looked in my eyes like he understood what I was saying. Because there's young women who might say, hey, and they may be younger than us, that, that man weak. He crying. These women ain't crying right now. They out here fighting. The young men got to match their energy. So if they see the leader of the town, even though we lost someone, gotta suck that thing up, bro, and keep going.
Mr. Young, can you please-
I sure will. So on, on another note, I wanted to be a liaison for the city, urban liaison. I, I asked that the city grant me five grand to be a liaison. In liaison work, I saw Ms. Smith in there doing a, a program for the, for the businesses, a grant program. I went out and talked to five businesses. I took my business plan and I went out and vetted these businesses, see even if they have scalability to work in Birmingham. Is your market suitable for the Birmingham market? So being an urban liaison for the city, I will vet these companies, bring them to Birmingham. And all, they're already established and ready to go and they can receive the grant. So that's another thing. And, and last one, I'll make it very quick. I know I went more than three minutes. The last thing was-
Very quickly, please.
I will, I will. The last thing was, I, I reached out to the top twenty corporations in the United States. And I, I was gonna send them an open business letter to come do business here in Birmingham. Quick Trip, Kroger, Barclays, Coca-Cola, Chase, Apple. I met majority of these people in Atlanta doing my business, Freeze Cream. I have their personal emails and I have their personal contact information, as well as the owner of Home Depot. Before I sent out this letter, we got into, with, with this incident this weekend, I decided not to send it out because it doesn't look good until we fix what's going on. Now, you can't have a bad without a good in a community. That's a battery. You cannot have a bad without a good. So we can't get away, there's no, there's no how to get away all the bad, but we got to think about the good. So what I propose is a walk, a north to south, east to west, Magic City Community Walk. It allows people to get together, walk through these communities, and start to get a feel for each other. Because if you don't know your neighbor, you really don't care about your neighbor. And there's, there's a lot of other things that I can't speak, but this is a time where everybody can hear. When you're only speaking with one councilman, the message get, get distorted. So this way, the public can know, and again, everyone has been on notice about the FOIA request, and that just holds everyone accountable so we can move forward. I appreciate y'all. I'm, I look forward to working with the city. Is there anything that I could do for the city or the councilmen to move forward in making any of this happen? Is this something that the city look forward to doing?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Your time's up. Next speaker, please.
Brenda Holyfield.
I believe she was here for one of the agenda items. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Gabriel Cubero. Um, is it still morning? Yeah. Good morning. Gabriel Caban Cubero, twenty-nine thirty-one, Tenth Court South, here in Birmingham. I had a few questions today, so I wanted to, one, ask for an accom- I, so my understanding is that there will be a town hall related to like the budget process and helping residents understand the way that the budget is set. Is that correct?
Yes, the current date for that is March eighteenth. We're, believe the start time for that will be six P M. I'm trying to get a determination on the precise location. I suspect that it will be at Battlewell Auditorium, but I haven't received a hundred percent confirmation of that.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to request an accommodation. If there can be simultaneous Spanish language interpretation available at that event, I'd like to invite some of my friends and partners in the community who interact with Spanish speakers in the community. So I wanted to ask and make a formal request for an accommodation for that. If you're unfamiliar with simultaneous interpretation, it's when you have the earpiece and someone speaking to you in the language that you prefer. I also wanted to ask if we can make American Sign Language available for that as well so any of our deaf or hard-of-hearing community members can participate. Then, my understanding is that there's gonna be a booklet that accompanies some of that to help the public understand. Is that correct? That's correct. I'd also like to request if you all can accommodate by creating a Spanish language version of that. Digital would be sufficient. That can spread across the internet very quickly. Print would be excellent, ideal, perfect, but at very minimum, a Spanish language one. I wanted to make that request as well. And then I have one last thing. So my understanding is that departmental hearings related to the budget are currently already occurring? Is that, or have they started yet?
They have not.
Okay. I wanted to ask, is it possible to make those either livestreamed or accessible for the public to just hear in and listen to, to how those goes? I'm not sure if that goes to city council or to the administration, but I wanted to ask if that's something that can be done this year.
That's, those are not the, the council's hearings? Those are conducted, determined by the administration?
Is anyone from the administration here who can speak to that?
We are. Typically, the departmental budget hearings are internal and then they're shared once we make those available to the public through the council. So at this time, they're internal.
Um, so they can't be made accessible to the public?
At this time, they're internal.
Okay. Are there notes or minutes taken that you all can share with us?
Once the mayor presents his budget recommendation to the council, that's when it's made public to our citizens.
So no notes can be available? Is that correct?
Once the mayor makes his budget presentation to the council, because it is an internal, it's a recommendation that's made from the departments to the mayor about what they want.
Right.
The mayor makes the final decision on what he will recommend to the council. That's when it's made public.
Okay. That was it. I didn't come to yell today. But it's great to see many of you. Don't laugh, Councilor Tate. It's great to see all of you and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. President, just very quickly, so we already considered putting that into Spanish because we're aware that a lot of our districts do have, and we see that campaigning residents that speak more than one language. I, I know I have a meeting with Hika, for example, and I've talked to Ms. Kidd about hiring somebody on staff for us because a lot of our districts like mine have a lot of Spanish-speaking residents. And so usually you have to go through the kids to speak to adults. I was thinking more printed because we have a lot of older residents. But once we get a digital copy, I'm sure we'll disperse it out. And then the sign language one is very good. I'm sure we can work on that as well. Because I went to Epic Elementary. I'm not sure you're familiar with it, so. You're not? Okay. So that's elementary school here in Birmingham where it was a little bit different, where kids honestly had to learn with, it was like real life. So I was five, six years old, learning how to do sign language with other people, people with disabilities. So I totally agree with you. So we're working on it. We, hopefully this town hall will be good. And I know we meet soon, so I look forward to meeting with you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Bessie Bell. Good morning. My name is Bessie Bell. I'm the executive director of the Just Be Real Foundation. I'm also a pastor at Thompson Chapel AMZ Zion Church in Fairfield, Alabama. I also have with me today, and I'm speaking today on behalf of women and veterans, the homelessness of women veterans and the opening of a house, which I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Janice Smith, who is the owner of Dominion Services.
My name is Janice Smith. I'm a real estate broker with Dominion Property Services and also the president of Dominion Serves You. And Dominion Serves You is the philanthropic arm of the real estate brokerage in which we, our mission is to provide safe and supportive transitional housing options for homeless veterans and individuals in need by empowering them to rebuild their lives and reintegrate into society with dignity and grace. And so we know that homelessness is a, a very big factor here in Birmingham. And we were fortunate to acquire a nine-bedroom boarding home in the Enslie Bush Boulevard area on Seventeen O One Avenue V. And I brought a couple of pictures and we spent the last twelve months restoring the property, bringing it up and making it livable and comfortable for residents to have somewhere, have somewhere to live. So we just, right now, we're needing a little more funding. We were promised some furniture from a- We were promised some furniture from a hotel in Montgomery. Maybe if we had gotten that commitment in Birmingham, it would have been a lot better. But we went through a lot of effort to go down and pick up the items, and they really didn't follow through with the commitment that they made to us. But, so I'll let Ms. Bessie, she's really good with the ask, so.
On March 4th, at 11:00, and I hope that most of you have received the invitation as well, we will be having the open house. And that open house will be, as I said, 1701 Avenue V in the Enslie-Bush area. Now, we've asked the mayor of office, of course, we've asked our city council, of course, and we've asked most of you to please be in attendance. What she was speaking about was we are asking for any type of donations to help us to house a lot of these veterans. These women have been, I'm a veteran as well. So we have found that there is a population of a lot of homeless women veterans with children in the Birmingham area and surrounding area. So we are opening up houses, and we are working with a national organization as well called PDI to provide housing to eradicate homelessness all across the country. And we are starting here in Birmingham with this first house. So we are asking for bedding, we're asking for, you know, whatever type we can. As she said, there was a promise given to us as what we thought was a promise, but, you know, the manager kind of reneged on that. So we are kind of scrambling at this point for any type of help that we can to make sure that the veterans, that the women and children that are coming will be, you know, able to have beds, house, and everything else that they're gonna need. We're gonna be providing programming, resume training, helping them, you know, life skills. These women have been trained to kill in the military, but they've been traumatized when they get out of the military by the challenges of life. So we're just gonna help them to try and transition back. So thank you for that. Any questions?
Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hill, about a couple of weeks ago, the VA has a veterans' response team. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. So you may want to reach out to the VA. They have a whole veterans' response team over there as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Bell for reaching out to my office, and we did get the information and the invitation. And you have a long track record and, you know, an admirable track record for this type of service to the community. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of, you know, the zoning restrictions for communal living, and I think you can have up to three unrelated persons in a dwelling, but if it goes to more than that, you have to, you know, get some special permissions.
Yes, we have went through the zoning, we went through the neighborhood association, we've gotten the building permits.
Okay, great.
We did meet with your executive assistant, I guess, yesterday, and she went over all that as well, so.
Okay, so we'll be in touch to see if there's anything we can do to help, but certainly applaud your efforts and, you know, want to thank you for being about this for a long period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Moore. Oh, all right. I think that brings us to the end. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Oh, one other thing, we do have one other house that will be, we will be opening on Georgia Road on March 25th. So we are in the process of making sure all of those permits and everything, and that will, that used to be a actual residential kind of, I mean, a boarding home. Yeah, it's a pathway. So we're actually gonna be opening that up for veteran women and their children as well.
Thank you. All right. We're relieved that brings us to the end of our meeting.
I'll move for adjournment.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Take that, Hunter.